Want to call a meeting to order? 7 o'clock. Welcome to our, I think, our third virtual meeting. Probably many of us have been on some meetings today, so it's a long line of meetings today that are virtual. In terms of attendance tonight, it looks like we have everyone but Michelle Burstey and Kathleen Curtin, I think they'll be joining us shortly. They have some commitments to attend to. And I want to welcome everybody again to our meeting. I see we have our student council too, so before we get there, let's go to the pledge of allegiance, please. Thank you. So moving on our agenda, next we have, as I mentioned, the student council. I saw both Lily and Katie popped on, so I'll turn it over to Lily, I guess, first.
Hello. So lately, we've just been trying to adjust to the changes in a virtual way, and we're trying to plan to do some things in the future and for the rest of the school year to keep everyone involved and engaged. So just to touch on what we did with Futures of Columbia, that Instagram page we made in order to share the accomplishments of the senior class, that's been going very well. We were getting a lot of messages, and it started slowing down just because most of the seniors have already made their decisions, but we're continuing to accept the submissions for that. And then this week, to keep everyone involved, we're doing a virtual Spirit Week where we're doing throwback pictures. So rather than having students go out of their way to dress up and do something like that, we're having them use pictures that they already have from school. So Monday, we had Kindergarten Day, and a lot of students posted their pictures from kindergarten. And Tuesday, we had Middle School Day, so they posted a lot of pictures from middle school. Today's first was First Dave's School, so everybody posted a throwback picture from First Dave's School, whether it was this year, kindergarten, or middle school. And then tomorrow, they're posting a favorite picture from a Spirit Week, and then Friday's going to be a picture from a favorite school event. So we're just going to try to keep going with stuff like that and maybe something new every week. I know we have something planned soon where we'll be doing Guess Who with baby pictures of teachers at Columbia. But with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, so like Lily said, we're just trying to keep up with going virtual. And so today, we had our third virtual student council meeting, which have all been going super well. And our focus for the next couple of weeks is trying to plan out how we're going to do elections, because normally those take place in the spring, and then we can have our officers elected, so we can plan over the summer for the next school year. So we have a couple ideas for how we're going to do that, so that will just be our plan for the next couple of weeks. And then we also wanted to give a shout out to the English department, who put together a video just to say how much they miss everyone, and to Grace Brody, who's a senior at Columbia, who put together a video of a ton of students saying how much we miss all the staff, which is a super nice way to end last week. And that's it.
Great, thanks, ladies. I've been enjoying seeing the senior decisions. I see them on Twitter, retweeted by Columbia Athletics and the district, so it's great to see where students' plans are for after their senior year, so thanks for sharing those.
Thank you.
Great job, keep it up. So with that, we'll move to our public forum. And again, a reminder that if you have comments for the public forum, we will be doing it via email. Mr. Simons will monitor that. I know that we do have the second public forum later in the meeting, so if there's some things that you want to talk about or email us about, please do that as well. So I'll read our opening statement. Residents, students, employees, and business representatives of the East Green West Central School District address the Board on matters concerning programs and/or operations of district other than matters involving personnel. Members of the Board do not directly respond to citizen concerns during the public forum. If a response is appropriate, the president or superintendent will contact the individual in the near future. Those persons wishing to address the Board will be recognized by the chair of the meeting and should state for the record their name, address, or affiliation with the district or business. While the Board does not wish to infringe upon free speech protections, it must be stressed that the visitors' forum is not deemed to be an open forum. The Board President will conduct the forum for the orderly and efficient operation of board business. Addition any remarks which may consider debatable or estigmatizing are prohibited and declared out of order. So with that, has there any emails come up yet? Mr. Simmons?
Let me just take a minute to refresh.
Or is there some comments from the administration or at this point? Those are out there? No emails, so anything? Everyone's good? We'll close the public forum, and we'll move to the board forum, board members. I'll start with Mr. President, Mr. Van. That's good. And then going from the screen, Deanna? Jen, Nancy? Joanne?
Yes, I'd just like to talk a few minutes with the work that is going on with the Ed Foundation and the district. We're partnering and working on a senior recognition program right now, where we will be delivering signs to our seniors. And within the next couple of weeks, we don't have definite dates put out right now, but a sign will be put on all the seniors' lawn with a little bag full of mementos and trinkets for them. We are amazed at the generosity in this community. We put out an email, and we put out messages on Facebook, and the community has just stepped right up, both financially and with offers to help. It's just amazing to see the amount of help that's coming from our community, and we thank everybody for that.
Great, thank you, Joanne. Yes, I would echo that, that's great to see. John? Good. Karen? Very good. Anyone else join us? I don't think so. And I don't have anything at this point, but also, Mr. Simmons, anything?
I do have a couple of things. One thing I want to just recognize is the video that the high school students put together that was received by the staff, including myself and the administrators at the high school, along with everybody back at Columbia. That really provided a morale boost for the staff, and I want to thank the students that are represented by the student council here, but also all the students in the high school that were involved in developing that video. That video came the morning after the governor announced on Friday that the schools would be closed for the remainder of the year, and that was probably the right decision to make in terms of safety and health, but it was a deflation of morale of some of our community. This has been a very effectively delivered process from our teachers, our administrators, but at the same time, it is a challenging one, and the extension of the school closing through June is something that we have to do. We have to continue to do a great job in serving the students and the community, but we do need an occasional lift from our students, and having our students do that for us was remarkable, greatly appreciated it, and really got a lot, email from a lot of teachers that were just so touched by it that it kind of motivated them, again, to keep going with the online learning and the other programs and connections that they're making. So I just want to acknowledge the students for giving us such a lift on Saturday morning. In light of the decision that was made, it announced through the governor's executive order on Friday. I do think it's time to reconnect with the community as a district, to check in, to see how our families are doing and our students are doing. So I've been working over the last couple of days with Mr. Buno, Mr. Goodwin, and some members of our administrative team, and we are planning on Thursday, May 14th, which is next Thursday, through Facebook and some other technology, which I'll explain in a minute, for the virtual community meeting, calling it a community check-in. That will involve any members of the community who want to participate, having access through Facebook. It will involve a brief presentation from me about where we've been and where we're going, with our continued building closing, but the need to continue to deliver the programs and services. I've asked members of the administrative team, or representative group, such as our high school principal, our middle school principal, two elementary principals, and our director of people personnel services, to be part of that team, along with Mr. Buno, to have a panel discussion, question and answer session of the community that will be facilitated through Google Meet, excuse me, Zoom. So they'll be able to be on the panel through Zoom from various locations, including their homes, if that's their preference, everyone be able to hear the panel. And we have engaged a private company to help us with this process called Thought Exchange. Thought Exchange is a tool that we used at our advocacy forum, which enables individuals who are participating to let us know what their key concerns are and to prioritize those concerns. And once those concerns are prioritized, we will be able to address them through the panel discussion, through a Q and A session. We think it's important to stay connected with our community. I will recognize Thought Exchange. Thought Exchange is a private vendor that has arrangements with some districts. They do not currently have an arrangement with our district. They are providing this technical support for free for the event. So that will be Thursday at 7:00 PM. There'll be an opportunity to hear from the community how things are going, an opportunity for them to hear from us what some of the considerations and issues are in the district moving forward. We think it will be a good exchange, and that will be May 14th at 7:00 PM. And Peter is working with Thought Exchange and the administrative team in my to put all this together. It'll be next Thursday night.
Any questions regarding that? I mean, I think that's something that I really look forward to doing in what is happening is, you know, community check-in, a lot of check-in with each other, and I think that's a great way for us to communicate with our community, to see how things are going and what their thoughts are. So with that, we'll go into our discussion items. Obviously, a major one is the budget discussion. We have the ongoing conversations, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Simons or Mr. Edson.
So as a starting point, I just want to review where we were at at our last meeting with our budget, because some things have not necessarily changed, but have become heightened concerns for school districts. At our last meeting, we recommended that the budget remain at a proposed $99.8 million. We also recommended that we would use some existing reserves of about $900,000 from our employee retirement reserve to offset the expense, some of the expenses for retirement payments next year. Additionally, we made an adjustment to our federal aid related to monies received by the district for retiree prescription coverage. So we had filled the gap at the time through a combination of utilizing existing reserves, monies that had been approved but saved by the district in the past, and we are proposing a tax levy increase of 1.52%, which is less than the tax cap set by New York State for our district, which is 1.62%. Since that time, there have been discussions in Washington about whether or not there would be federal assistance to the state and local governments, including schools. Those conversations have been somewhat muddied and stalled, and so because of that, we began to look at what we might do as a district in the event that our state aid was caught significantly and not offset by any federal monies that may or may not materialize. And so as a first step, I asked Mr. Edson to do an update to the fund balance projection regarding monies that we were saving within the budget this year, where he would project at this time we might land in terms of total expenditures for the year, balanced with our revenues, and whether we would have monies available this year, how much monies would be available this year to potentially use as a solution to offset some of the gap for next year. And I'm going to ask Mr. Edson to talk about the fund balance projection before I do.
The fund balance projection board is in the same format that the board saw each of the last two times, includes data through March 31st, 2020. And we look on the first page of the projection, it shows each of the unbalanced components by restricted, non-spayable, assigned and unassigned, and the key piece is the unassigned. And right now, we're projecting $1.3 million more than what was on hand at the start of the fiscal year. And that money will be available to offset that potential decrease to state aid payments, which we understand will be reduced next year, although it's not 100% certain at this time. And as you recollect, employees are being paid their regular wages through the end of the school year, so you don't see major changes in our salary projection from the last projection that I did, but you will see various savings in other areas, because obviously, we're not running buses, the buildings are not, many of them are not occupied, and we're taking those savings and we're putting them here. Still believe it's somewhat of a conservative estimate, and we hope to do better, but it's what we know as of March 31st. And that's a quick update on the projection.
Great, Larry. Any questions regarding the unbalanced projections? I think it's prudent that when you look at all those different things, there's still a lot of unknown. We had thought that by April 30th, we'd have some more information. Now that's, nothing's happened, so probably May 15th is the next major update about what's happening with schools. There's a lot of things that are still unknown. You know, later in the agenda, you'll see things with the budget vote and the calendar have shifted as well, and we'll talk about those in a minute. But I think, you know, this is a start where we have to base some assumptions around the reserves and how that impact would on the budget for this year, but also keeping in mind future years and what that impact may be long-term, given the circumstances that we're facing.
One thing I would add is, we have an obligation, given the scope of what state is suggesting that the funds might be, it could be anywhere between 10% and 20% of our foundation aid. That figure represents between $1.7 million and $3.4 million, depending on whether it's 10% or 20%. We're hoping it would be less than 10%, but we have a obligation to look internally within our district for potential reductions in the event that the scope of that cut is as large as 20%. So we kind of have a Plan A and Plan B in mind. There are some issues related to looking at the impact of potentially not replacing certain positions that would be eliminated, could possibly be eliminated through attrition based on what we know currently about retirements. We're also investigating some other ways that we could facilitate expenditure reductions without hurting the kids. If the scope of the cuts are as large as they might be, it becomes a process of making sure that you can continue to move forward with your, meaning the academic and social emotional needs of the kids, but maybe with a little tighter staffing or scheduling. So we are looking at everything. We are not, at this point, prepared to announce cuts. We want to see on May 15th what that state aid reduction is, and we anticipate that we'll have some conversations over the next couple of weeks with our board, once we have more information. But we're trying to, we're trying to use monies that have been approved by voters in the past, for which we have saved those monies, but if we use all of our savings in one year or even in two years, we create a structural deficit as our expenses continue to go up. Pretty soon, we run out of money, even though we are in a stable position right now. That can change in a hurry, as some districts have experienced over the last 10 to 15 years, we rely more on state aid than screenless. So we're trying to be prudent, look at this in the long term, not just in one year, because we think this might be in multiple years.
I think because of the timeline, we have to really think about the options. I mean, we're going to be in a pretty extreme window of having to make decisions in the next couple of weeks. We got that deadline in terms of approving the vote of the budget, and then getting it out to the voters through the process that we're talking about today. So we need to be prepared. That's what we're doing. Is there any questions, board members, for Jeff or Larry about the budget, comments about the budget in general, concerns? No? So more to come, and we'll continue to update as we have information. Next on the agenda is the revised notice of the public hearing.
So you'll see later on in the consent agenda, approval of this revised notice. The original notice was published once in the newspaper, however, with the recent change on Friday to the vote date, which will now be June 9th statewide, there is going to need to seriously rework that notice of the public hearing. Our attorneys did that on Tuesday, excuse me, Monday evening, and it was ready for Times Union submission the next morning, and it should appear on Tuesday, May 12th, as statutorily required. And we'll see also later in the meeting, a section noted as updated budget calendar, and I think because that is linked to our notice of public hearing, I think I'll go through it at this time. So if you take a look at that updated budget calendar, and that's the schedule after the memo, you'll see that there was, the first budget calendar was approved back in August, and nine months later, we're changing it based on this recent announcement. For Board of Education candidates, we made petitions available on March 13th, which was about two weeks earlier than normal. However, with the COVID-19 crisis, the governor suspended people collecting signatures on their petitions, and therefore, for this vote, no petition submissions will be required, and people have the option to self-nominate themselves for the ballot. Those nominations are due to the district clerk's office by 5:00 PM on Monday, this coming Monday, May 11th. There will be no draw for the ballot position based on the governor's executive order. That will, candidates will be listed alphabetically on the ballot. With the Meet the Candidates Night, there's only three candidates, we're not likely to have it, but even if we have four candidates, it looks like that might be too difficult to organize at this late date with our friends at the League of Women Voters. So we're looking at a cancellation for Meet the Candidates Night. Campaign statements are due three weeks later than the original due dates. Those board candidates that have submitted nominations have been mailed updated campaign statements. No changes to the budget handbook. The budget packets are scheduled to be available to the public on Tuesday, May 26th. This is the day before the board's budget hearing, which will be May 27th, and of course, will be a virtual meeting. We've gone through a series of two sessions on, two formal sessions on the budget, and the plan currently is for budget adoption by the board on Wednesday, May 20th, and of course, that will be a virtual meeting. Budget vote is scheduled for Tuesday, June 9th, and that date will be different than usual. There will be no in-person going to the polls. It will all be by absentee ballot. We're in the process of constructing the absentee ballot, which will be mailed to each individual who is on the poll registration list with a return envelope, which will be postpaid, and that will have to be returned to the district by mail no later than 5:00 PM on June 9th. Again, that's really important because it's not a postmark, it is a return date, it must be received by mail no later than June 9th. The governor has not announced the revote date for those school districts that have unsuccessful budget votes at this time. There's a tight timeframe for the budget newsletter that will likely be condensed this year more than normal, and Mr. Adam in our Public Relations Department will be putting that together in short order. We do plan to mail the absentee ballot with the return envelope on May 28th, the day after the budget hearing. And with regard to the publication of the annual notice, which normally goes four times within the 45 days preceding the vote, that will only be done twice in the 28 days preceding the vote, the first of which will be on May 12th, and the second one will be on May 29th. The executive order by the governor has suspended in-person registration, which normally is done at our district clerk's office every business day between 8:00 and 3:30. That is not allowable this year. People may register online at the New York State Department of Motor Vehicles. Those of you who have renewed your licenses in the past few years will note that they ask you a series of questions regarding voter registration if you do it in person. And that is what we know right at the moment. We are researching a series of questions about the counting of paper ballots with the school attorney on the vote date. We'll be working with our election inspectors and poll workers to do that process on the voting day, but there will be no in-person voting in the current year for school district votes. As you know, there's been a recent federal court order regarding the primary that is different than school district votes. Our vote will be conducted by absentee ballot only. That's my understanding.
Any questions for Larry, board members, regarding the schedule?
I do have one question, Larry. If we get more than three candidates, I was really impressed with our young people at the forum on sustainability. Since the League of Women Voters couldn't do a Meet the Candidates Night, would it be possible to talk to Mr. Batchor and our students to possibly, if there's any interest, organize something like that?
I think that's a good idea, and we'll see how many candidates we have on the 12th, which is the day after the due date. So we'll see where we are typically. If there's three, three seats, we don't typically conduct it, but if there's more, we will, we'll just gate that with Mr. Batchor and see if he's willing to do something on a virtual basis.
Okay, thank you very much.
We also have scheduled virtual sessions with our PTOs. We'll be doing a combined meeting with all of the PTOs and any parents who want to join us at the elementary, middle, and high school level on May 28th. at the elementary, middle and high school level on May 28th at 6:30, which is the day after the public hearing. We also have scheduled virtual faculty meetings. We have a middle school faculty meeting to talk about the budget on June 2nd at 2:45. High school faculty meeting at June 3rd at 2:30. An elementary staff meeting on June 4th at 3:15. Any staff can join any one of those three meetings based on availability. We're trying to do the same group meetings regarding the budget that we typically would do, although we'll be doing them through technology. Additionally, I have been part of a phone conference meeting with Jack Conway and other community leaders every week. Jack Conway is our East Greenbush Town Supervisor. And he is calling the town board to see if they can arrange a special board meeting because that meeting has to fall between May 20th and the board. Hopefully, we'll be able to adopt a budget and the June 9th vote day. And the regular scheduled meetings don't fall within that window. So he's been gracious to try to arrange a special board meeting to ensure that the town board knows about our school district budget.
Well, there'll be other communications via mail, like the postcards, notification, absentee ballots will go out. I think it's really important that because of the return date, again, like Mr. Ressent said, the return date is the 9th, not the postcard date right from that. So I think we need our social media, our website to just continue to make sure people understand how important it is in terms of timing when they get that absentee ballot to turn it around and give it a minute.
We do, there won't be a postcard going out. Right now, it's in design and it needs to be reviewed by the school attorney. But it'll be going out to all voters to inform them that the voting will be by absentee ballot and things are due back, what they're voting on in general. And a couple of other things that are set forth in the executive order. We're putting that together right now. We've seen a few samples have crossed our path today. But we want to make sure they comply before we send them to the printer.
I think we're in a pretty good position in terms of the knowing who the voters are in our district. A lot of districts are in a good position like that. And I think we're looking at excess of over 20,000 mailings.
We had last year 21,952, I believe. When we looked at the whole book from last year, they will update the list, which they merge in with the county list for our district. And then if we have any registered, you know, late registrations, we'll check them through county because they're most likely to be receiving the late registrations because they won't be able to do it in person at the district. The governor's executive order did not allow school districts at this time to do an online registration. But that may change and we're, you know, we check in and listen to the governor just about every day. And we will see if that changes in the next few weeks. If it does, we'll put it in place and get it on our website. But right now, the process is through the DMV website. And I'll be working with Mark, Adam in the next few days to put that link up on our website. We have some older information on the budget, which we haven't gotten to just yet on the website. It's thrown things in what I would call slight turmoil since Friday to understand and be able to do a paper ballot vote appropriately for our residents. I know Mr. Mann.
What is to be our procedure if ballots are mailed here?
They'll be mailed, well, we'll pick them up from the printer. They will come here, we will put them together and then they will be brought to the post office. When they come back, they'll come back here. They actually come, you know, to the post office. Our courier will pick them up at the post office and bring them and will put them in a secure place upstairs. They will sort them when they come in because they should be sorted by, as we understand, polling site. And so we can report the actual results that way. And then those ballots, as we understand, will be marked in the books as voted absentee. And we will compare the books to our counted ballots. If they match, we will begin counting at 5:00 PM, which is the deadline for any ballots that have come back on the voting day. And we'll have our election team of inspectors and poll workers to do that and we'll compile the results and get them out to the community. We're not certain where we're going to do that. We think in this room. But there's also a possibility we might be doing it in the golf cafeteria or gymnasium. We're trying, you know, we've got to think about the social distancing piece and if it's going to work. And we have to get directions and clear our process with the school attorney. And I think that they will be rerunning their webinar on paper ballots because they had talked earlier in the process that some schools might not be able to receive voting machines. We had been assured that we were going to receive the voting machines, but now that's kind of a loop point because they're all going to be by mail. I think, I don't know what we'll do. I think with the COVID-19, we'll have to get clarification from the attorney as to how to best do that. So if that's the case, if there's going to be any potential visitors or observers, we might do that in a large space, a larger space. Maybe they do the gym. So we're just, we're not sure at this point. It's, that piece is among the way we're trying to figure out a postcard and get our, you know, we've secured a vendor for the printing of the outer envelope, the return envelope. We're working on a postage, a special postage permit at this time. We are also working on the postcard. So we're trying to do some things that are the most immediate right at the moment, update our budget calendar. And then we'll plan voting day as it gets in the next weeks or so. And we're going to schedule a meeting with our voting group probably at the end of next week or the beginning of the following week to talk about the counting process. So we have a lot on our plates. There is a tightened timeframe and it's slightly stressful. We're, we're, we're not sure, but you know, we might, right, we might livestream it to protect the vote workers from, you know, any, might livestream it. We've got to look at that and see how, you know, what's recommended and what's allowable, what's preferred. We don't have all the details nailed down just yet.
Larry, I know you don't like to estimate, like the exact, estimating cost is pretty significant for the postage mailing.
It is, and 22,000 ballots. We're, we're thinking it's around forty, forty-four thousand dollars. So it's very expensive because we do need to have the inner envelope, the return envelope postage paid according to the governor's order. And we will do that. You know, it's an unfunded expense. You know, we may save a couple of dollars because we may not need as many vote workers on the vote night. A small crew might work better. And you know, we're, we're taking, we're taking it day by day. We're, it's, it's our role as a district to be certain that residents have the opportunity to vote in this school budget. And you know, we support the governor's initiative to provide each resident access to voting on the school district budgets. That's what we're committed to. And we're going to do it in the most, you know, cost-effective and appropriate manner. It's not as cost-effective as we had hoped, but we are, but we are going to, you know, we're going to comply with the order as we understand it.
Any other questions, board members? Again, like you're talking about multiple mailings, probably in certain households, it could be two, three, four people getting votes and newsletters and things like that. I think constant reminders and things like that will be important as we go. Thank you for that, Larry. It was a lot of work and pressure, the short timeframe. So back up on our agenda. So we had one down to the other items. So back up to finishing discussion items and going to the board reports. We'll start with Marissa. Hi, Marissa.
Hi there. Just a brief update on the interview process for the Director of Business and Finance. The final number of applicants for this position ended up being 16. Mr. Simons and I screened applications and determined to schedule seven candidate interviews. The dates for the interviews will be Tuesday, May 12th and Thursday, May 14th from 8:30 to 12:30 each day. I want to thank Mr. Dunn for serving on the interview committee. We will be holding these interviews remotely via Zoom. Each candidate will get their own invitation to a Zoom meeting and the interviews will be approximately one hour apiece. Questions have been drafted and will be reviewed by Mr. Simons this week. I also wanted to provide an update on the Special Grants Committee. The committee met on Wednesday, April 22nd. And we reviewed proposals from our EGTA members. And ultimately, seven proposals are being moved forward for a recommendation. And you will see that on tonight's consent agenda.
Any questions for Marissa? Good luck in the search. I hope it goes well. It's an interesting process to do those interviews by Zoom. Do you have a committee as well, like a larger committee?
It's a smaller committee than typical. We're still in the process of reviewing our contracts that require certain members to be on the committee. In other cases, it's not a requirement. We're still discussing.
Very good. All right. Good luck. Thanks, Marissa.
Thank you.
Larry, anything else? I have a quick note that Policy Committee members probably in the next week are going to be receiving a series of policies to look at, something which involve compliance with education law 2D that we talked about earlier in the school year. I'm going to be reviewing the draft policies also with Mr. Goodman, who's our Technology Director on Monday. So we're working on a lot of things.
The business of the district continues. He wants sprinkles in there, right? Thanks, Larry. Mr. McHugh, you out there?
I am. The only thing to report is all the summer curriculum writing proposals have been submitted. There's about 17 proposals in total. Really happy with what has come in. They're all the results of program reviews or SED changes, whether it's regions. So I'm hopeful that we can do that work this summer. And I'm also hopeful that we are able to support all of the proposals that came in. They're all of top quality. So we're kind of working through what that would look like. But we'll see if we can get that work done this summer. We're hopeful.
Jim, is some of those proposals able to do virtually if possible?
That's what we're working through right now. I'm going to talk to the folks that submitted proposals and speak with department chairs. I think it can, but some of the proposals might need to be refined a little bit because of the way that work will be completed. But really happy with what was submitted. It's, it's, it really is a product of, of the way we've run the program reviews. And the other important thing that, that you see in the proposals is that if it's a high school initiative, they're bringing in folks from the middle school. If it's an elementary or a middle school initiative, they're also bringing some high school folks in to put their eyes on that, on that work and to participate a little bit. So I think that's a positive, a positive thing.
All right. Thanks. I hope we can move forward with those proposals. Thank you. Nothing further. Nothing further. Okay. All right. So including committee reports and now moving to the minutes, we have two sets of minutes for approval. The first set of minutes, April 8th. I believe everyone was present except for Mr. Dunn. Is there any comments or questions or changes to those minutes where you agree? No? If not, any motion to approve the minutes? Karen, second? Kathleen, all those in favor? All those abstaining? Mr. Dunn? Approved. Thank you. Going to the minutes for April 21st. Any comments, questions or revisions? If not, any motion to approve those? Mark? No, you weren't there. Mark wasn't there. So Jennifer, Deanna, second, all those in favor? All those abstaining? Mr. Mann? Can't see him down there, but he's, he said abstaining. Those are approved. Thank you. Moving to regular business, approval of programs for residents and children with disabilities. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, any motion to approve those? Kathleen, second. Joanne, all those in favor? Approved. And then going to the revised budget calendar and district vote, we had a very concise and accurate picture of what's happening in the calendar. It's pretty complex. There's a lot of things to look at. But if there's any final questions? No? Seeing none. I need a motion to approve the calendar. Michelle, second. John, all those in favor? Approved. All right. So we get that's official now. Moving to, out of regular business into reports or presentations with superintendent?
The one item that I want to just update the board and the community on. There, there has been an open question across the state regarding whether or not school districts have local authority to amend their school calendar this year in light of the fact that the governor's executive order required online instruction and other services to be provided during spring break and on Good Friday. We continue to provide those services during what would normally be a scheduled break as well as religious observance holiday. In addition, we had two unused snow days and some other factors in our calendar that should we continue through the scheduled last day of school, which I believe is June 26th this year, we would be over the number of contractual days within our late contracts by approximately eight days. Additionally, some of our families have expressed some level of fatigue and needed a break. So we are in the process of working on that. We do have some determinations to make within a short period of time regarding that. I have touched base with our attorney the other evening to ensure that we can shorten the calendar. And I don't have a clear answer on that yet, nor do other districts. While some districts have made that decision and announced that decision, we have not been informed, nor has any district been informed, that we have a local authority to do that yet. We're trying to get a clarification. Our attorney said he was going to talk with the school board's attorney about getting an answer on that. So hopefully in the next two weeks, I'll be able to make an announcement. Maybe perhaps next Thursday at the May 14th. Maybe perhaps next Thursday at the May 14th meeting when I get more information. But we recognize that that's a question out there. We're looking at it, and we will hopefully be able to get clear guidance in the next.
Thanks for bringing that up. That's a very nice, on a lot of people's minds about the calendar as well as the state calendar across the state for schools. Moving on the agenda, table motions. I don't have anything this time. All business, board members, anything bring up? No? Okay. Then now we have the consent agenda.
Under the non-instructional support memo, that there should be nothing there?
We had no actions. Am I correct, Marissa, there was nothing?
That's correct. There's no retirements, no hires, no resignations, no movement.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we have items A through H. Any other questions regarding the consent agenda? I know we had a couple of retirements. Congratulations to those folks who are retiring. Anyone else? Anything? All right. If not, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Kathleen, second. Mark, all those in favor? Great. Thank you. Approved. Next on the agenda, we have new business. Any new business to be brought forth, board members? Nothing? Public forum, Mr. Simons, anything on the email list?
Nothing submitted to me about.
Nothing submitted. Second opportunity, board members. I'll just throw it out there. You want?
Mike, I just want to mention that next week, I have registered with NISBA for the Leading with Emotional Intelligence in Uncertain Times webinar. It seemed pretty timely. If anybody else is available, it's next Tuesday, the 12th. Like I said, it seems very timely.
Yeah, I think school boards have done a nice job getting information out. It's timely, providing, I think, Saturday webinars with the commissioner and some high-level state executive folks, and also being very supportive and getting information out to school board members. So it'd be great.
Yeah, they've done an excellent job.
And anything else, school board members? All right. I think just the closing comments before we kind of move on. I just want to, again, acknowledge and thank all the work of our staff, our administrators, everyone who's working on behalf of our students, our facilities, folks that are here, IT, you know, the unsung heroes. We have our folks who are in the front lines, our nurses, our responders. But also, we have our educators who are doing a wonderful job, kind of holding the system together. And, you know, without you, can't be done. And our parents were working so hard to support their children and continue to support them and do their best, balancing family, education, and their own jobs and concerns. So we're all together on this. We'll be here as a school community, and I hope next week's Q and A, we can get a lot of input. So we can hear from the community, hear the things that are on your mind, and address those as best we can, even though there's a lot of uncertainty. So again, thank you for everyone. Appreciate all your work, and it was teacher appreciation as well. And it's not just teachers, it's the TAs, it's all the nurses, it's everyone out there who's doing their best to maintain some semblance of normalcy for our school district, our kids. Well, thank you again. So with that, we do need an executive session. So for board members, we'll need about 10 minutes to set that up, and there'll be a separate email again. And what we'll do is we'll get that out to the board members. So we don't anticipate any business. The executive session is for collective negotiations and personnel.
I have one, two items.
Oh, two items before we go to executive session. Sorry. It's okay.
You reminded me. Okay, today is National Teacher Appreciation Week. This week is National Teacher Appreciation Week, and we sent a communication out to our teachers this morning. But I also want to publicly recognize all of the work that the teachers do to serve the kids, as well as the increase in the amount of support that they're providing our kids at this time through the remote running. They're doing a fabulous job under very challenging circumstances. And whether it was this year, in our unique circumstances, or any other year, our teachers in East Green Bush do a great job. Secondly, today is National Nurses Day, and we want to recognize and thank all of the nurses in our country, but also in particular, our school nurses, who do a great job in taking care of our kids and our staff every day. Our nurses have stepped forward to help support childcare program in the district, and I don't know what we would do without nurses. And I kind of have to say that as a father of a nurse and the son-in-law of a nurse. So I would say it anyways. Congratulations and thanks to all our nurses.
So with that, I need a motion to move into executive session. Michelle, second. John, all those in favor? So let's reconvene about the Friday afternoon. You'll get an email and respond back on. So thanks. Good night, everybody.